Well, excited about this next one, Dr. Cashwell.
Then I shall say last but not least, I'm bringing items forward for the board's review. We have a review of the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 to fiscal 2031, 2032 capital improvement plan considerations. And Mr. Pritchard will provide you a presentation and opportunity to ask questions. This again is a first look at our capital improvement plans.
I think with all this excitement, this is the nervous I've been standing in front of this board. Good evening, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. Today I will share our capital improvement plan for 2324 through 31 through 32. Each year, the board is asked to consider and approve a capital improvement plan, which includes projected funding amounts needed for maintaining and growing our facilities, as well as funding for transportation and technology infrastructure. While the CIP is only funded one year at a time, we take a long look in creating each plan, and thus we are also presenting a long-range plan, which takes a 10-year look at facilities projects. This allows the division to develop and maintain a list of planned upgrades, renovations, and improvements, and schedule them as funding is available, as well as to consider how bonds may be leveraged to fund such needs. While we know our plans and needs can change year to year as CIPs are introduced, the long-range planning keeps us focused and on track with keeping our buildings in good condition for teaching and learning. Before we look at the proposed CIP, I'll provide an update on the 2016 bond projects and other current projects. At this time, all the 2016 bond projects are completed except for the Adams Elementary School, and I am pleased to share updates on this project. The design work for Adams Elementary School was awarded to Mosley Contracts or Mosley Architects, and the construction bid will go out this month. We are currently in the process of identifying swing spaces onsite for teaching and learning to continue during the renovation. Work should begin in February 23 and planning and completion at the end of 2024. Of course, supply chain issues continue to persist and may impact this timeline. I'll keep the board updated, and please know that we are striving for a 2024 completion on this project. This slide shows the funding projects that will start this year in early 2023. You'll note the important career and technical education, our program expansions, and renovations for both the ACE Centers at Hermitage and Holland Springs High Schools, which were approved by both this board and the Board of Supervisors and funded in a previously approved CIP. The ACE Projects will be designed by Quinn Evans Architects, and construction will be done by Cambridge. Preparations are being coordinated now, and we should begin work within the month. These projects will ensure world-class CTE programming, state-of-the-art teaching and learning spaces, as well as 900 more seats for students interested in participating in these programs. The campus at Virginia Randolph, previously listed as a project for future years on the CIP, was funded through the ESER III grant. This project for a renovation and rebuild of the campus of Virginia Randolph will allow the division to expand innovation and a one-of-a-kind alternative programming to meet the diverse and unique needs of our students. The project is being designed by Mosley Architects, and the construction bid goes out at the end of December with an anticipated start in March. We are pleased to share this week that the Henrico voters passed a bond referendum, which will allow the school division to tackle several projects. Go ahead, get it out. Referendum, which will allow the school division to tackle several projects previously shown on our CIP long-range plan as priorities, but without a funding source. Eighty-three percent, or eight of every 10 voters in Henrico, said yes to much-needed renovations and expansions of our school community. Investing in our schools is investing in the future of our community, and we are grateful to the citizens of Henrico County and our elected leaders value our successful public schools. The projects in the referendum create learning spaces that support innovation and collaboration by funding new schools and renovations of buildings that, in some cases, are more than 50 years old. Three hundred and forty million and five hundred thousand, don't want to forget that, over a period of six years will be dedicated to address aging infrastructure, address growth, and ensuring innovation, teaching, and learning environments. The list on the slide notes specific bond-funded projects and that planned timeframe for each project. It is so rewarding to see the Henrico citizens understand the considerable return on investment that our schools provide. By voting yes for this bond, our community is recently telling our young people and our dedicated educators that their success matters to all of us. Each CIP cycle provides an opportunity to continue to keep an eye on the future. This slide lists future projects, not showing on our current CIP draft, but which represent longer-range projection and planning efforts. This list represents future projects currently identified as needing to be addressed in years eight through 10 of our long-range plan. As long-range planning continues, additional projects could be added. The first four schools on this list were evaluated in our first capital facilities pre-planning study and are the list as renovations accordingly. The costs will have to be determined once a starting time is designated for these projects so that we can, so that the cost includes inflation for that time. The last five schools on this list will be studied in our next capital facility pre-planning study to determine priority order and whether they are best suited for rebuilding or renovation. If we remain on track through fiscal year 33, we will have renovated or rebuilt all schools in Henrico County built prior to 1990. In our proposed CIP, we'll be asking for an increase to our mechanical and roofing line from two and a half million to three and a half million dollars. Cost and expenses continues to increase each year, yet the CIP has been funded at the same value for the past 22 years. This funding is critical as we work to maintain our HVAC and mechanical systems at our 73 schools. We are grateful that we are able to leverage one-time ESER funding, as well as some meals tax funding to help with some of our HVAC maintenance and upgrades over the past year. This funding was critical as air quality was an important mitigation factor as, as work to create safe learning environments amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. This CIP requests 5,800,000 for an emergency replacement of the entire HVAC system at Douglas Freeman High School. While the newer part of the system was installed in 2009, we have had chronic maintenance issues across the Freeman HVAC system, and while we have been able to resolve the matter temporarily as issues arise, it is no longer feasible or cost-efficient to resolve the recurring issues this way and must look at a long-term solution that replaces the system. In order to address our aging playgrounds at our elementary schools, the CIP seeks to program $1 million to establish an ongoing replacement plan, allowing equipment to be replaced every 11 to 12 years to ensure current safety standards are met. Each elementary school has a playground set for grades K through 2 and another grades 3 through 5. Each playground set costs $125,000, each totaling $250,000 per school. We have identified some one-time funds to begin playground replacements for our most-aged equipment immediately, but with this $1 million CIP request, we would replace the 32 of our oldest structures in the most need of replacement and then ensure ongoing replacement cycles as needed. We continue to leverage meals tax funding for deferred maintenance projects at our schools. We remain grateful to both the school board and the Board of Supervisors for this funding to help maintain our 73 facilities. The funding has been utilized for security projects, such as vestibules, camera system replacements. It has also allowed us to replace gym floors, bathroom upgrades, carpet replacement, lighting upgrades, and parking lot improvements. Annually, meals tax funds are used for projects across all school levels in all five magisterial districts. We will continue to use the $9 million meals tax on various deferred maintenance projects at schools that are not covered in our CIP. I would like to thank this board and the Board of Supervisors for their support to replace our aging bus fleet. Last year's CIP included important funding for bus replacements. Since the approval of the last CIP, we have used CIP and ESER funds to purchase 127 full-passenger buses with climate control and 70 exceptional education lift buses with climate control. This totals 197 new buses purchased within the last three years. The funds allowed us to more quickly decrease the bus fleet's age, thus reducing fuel costs and repair costs. It has also improved driver workspaces, as all new buses are equipped with climate control and technology upgrades that will help make the department improve on effectiveness and efficiency. Transportation funds in the CIP are also important as we address the needs of our aging vehicle fleet. These are the work vehicles that are not our school buses. Currently, the average age of our 461 vehicles is 13 years old. Just as student transportation is important, we must maintain an infrastructure for ACPS vehicles that will allow us to continue to service our school division. The CIP funding of 6 million for vehicle replacement will ensure we address and maintain our aging bus and vehicles fleet. I would like to again say thank you to this board and the Board of Supervisors for support of our technology infrastructure funding. Last year's $2 million CIP improvement provided additional funding to continue our large-scale technology project to provide innovation, our innovative and the latest generation display technologies in ACPS classrooms that did not have display technology or had old, unsupported technology. The Phase 1 FY 2122 allowed us to purchase 1,400 Promethean panels delivered to elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, including program locations, resulting in about 35% of the classrooms receiving new panels across the district with a focus on the schools and the classrooms most in need. Phase 2, the FY 22 and 23, we placed an additional 265 Promethean panels to our elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as program locations. Our biggest focus this phase was getting elementary classrooms to 95% with up-to-date display technology. Middle school and high school classrooms received 115 of these new panels as well. Moving forward, the $2 million CIP technology request will continue to improve our technology infrastructure that is so critical to our instructional programs by upgrading and replacing outdated technology. We will continue to add additional display technologies in classrooms so every student across the county has the same access and opportunity to have these current and updated This concludes the presentation and provides a first look at the proposed CIP, including our facilities project list, funding for transportation, and funding for technology. We will be seeking the board's approval for our preliminary CIP at the December monthly board meeting, and then we will provide a proposal to the Board of Supervisors so that they may consider, so they may be considered during their budget deliberations. Then, once approved by the supervisors, it will be returned to this board for your final approval, and I'll be glad to take any questions at this time. Just remember, y'all, we're all excited.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. We're still very excited. And before we get to comments and questions, just on behalf of the board, I want to express our deep appreciation to the, to the facilities team, the finance team, and Dr. Cashwell's cabinet, the Board of Supervisors, as well as Mr. Hinton for their incredible effort on the bond and, and meeting with hundreds of meetings to meet with our constituents, as well as just a heartfelt thanks to our citizens. Over 80% is just incredible, and thank you to our citizens for using your vote to tell our students and our educators that they are worth the investment. So we start with you, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of your first comments, you said, when we invest in schools, we invest in community. Did you get that from the chair? Because I think I saw her quote that. I was wondering.
You know, I have an extensive group that reviews all of my work.
Well, I loved her comments.
I'm a little bit more blunt, directed to the point, so I try to soften things up a little bit.
That is for sure.
I'm not saying you have a ghostwriter, but I'm just saying it sounded very familiar, but the sentiment is also universally shared, and so I just echo what you said as a show as my colleagues. You can't look at that and not get excited about just the continued investment, the continued desire to ensure that equity and opportunity is paramount and tantamount to us across the entire division. So very excited about everything that you presented. Quick question, well, not statement, because you'd like Dr. Ferro to answer one of my first questions. I know that Adams Elementary School is no longer in the Fairfield District, but I am excited, as the former school will rep to hear the timeline you shared. I think you said by the end of '24?
Yes.
And so really excited about that, so thank you so much.
And I did a bond presentation there, and they're extremely excited. I mean, they're, they're ready for this, so bring on the trailers, they don't care, they're ready to do this. So it's, it's a cool excitement there at that school.
Temporary pain for permanent gain, I got it. So with the meal tax monies being allocated the way that we allocate them, when we're talking about our future projects and CIP planning and looking at the list of security improvements for the next three years using our meal tax funding, could you share quickly just for me and for us how we're looking to address the safety and security component of our open campus schools and what can be done to better secure them as it relates to access point entry? I know this is a constant conversation that you and I have had, Superintendent, as well, but this is something that my constituents emphasize a lot as relates to safety and security of our students and our staff, especially with Chamberlain Elementary School, Brookton Middle School, Fairfield Middle School, Henrico High School, and others. So can you kind of speak to that?
I will provide, you know, just certainly, safety is something we're all committed to, and we've seen that meals tax dollars and Mr. Pritchard alluded to in his comments, a good portion of those meals tax funds have been dedicated to safety projects like camera replacements and vestibules and a number of other elements that are safety-related. And so while we don't really advertise specific schools and safety projects, you know, for obvious reasons to maintain safety and security of our plans, please know that definitely the meals tax funds are put towards a number of efforts, including safety and security. And one of the items we heard come in our safety and security presentation, I believe it was our last work session, if I recall correctly, the Blue Ribbon Safety Panel really looked at our campus facilities, all campus styles, to your point, to look at sort of entry and exit points, access points, both to the building and the campus, to look at how they might continue to strengthen our efforts in keeping our buildings safe. And so one of the recommendations from that panel was related to looking at swipe entries and those sorts of things. So we would continue to look to leverage a variety of funding sources, including meals tax, as we work towards implementation of those recommendations.
And other campus-style schools, those swipe card accesses, we try to plan to put more of those accesses on those campuses than our one, you know, one, under-one-roof schools. So, I mean, that's one of the areas that we're looking at.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Ms. Consella.
Yes, and thank you. Another one of my favorite presentations every, this time, every year. If you could answer the question that I've been waiting for this answer for so, so long, and I did drive past our Hermitage ACE location yesterday, and I saw some fencing that would be put up around a project. If you were going to finally break ground on it, when might we be breaking ground on our ACE Center expansion?
Should be within the month.
Within the month?
Yes.
Excellent. So we'll be getting notified soon of a, so I can show up with my shovel and celebrate.
Absolutely.
It's funny, you and I must have drove by at some point, because I left the Board of Supervisors meeting and took the back way, and I was like, just amazed at all the fencing that was up, and I mean, it's, it's getting ready, so.
I have to say, it's finally happening. I'm very excited. What did you say, 900, 900 more seats?
900 more seats.
That's amazing, because we're going to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. But with that being part of the conversation, that we're gonna break ground on it, this kind of goes backwards a little bit into enrollment and capacity and the, the data that I've asked Dr. Cashwell to, to post to Board Docs so that folks understand that there will still be, even though these centers won't be finished by fall 2023, there will be an impact difference in capacity, right? Because we're going to use short-term solutions. I hate to say the word, but in this case, trailers, trailers are okay. Short-term only, hear what I said, short-term only during this construction project to achieve capacity relief, as well as meet the needs of our students. But how are we gonna work around the construction, you know, instruction during extruption, construction during instruction during construction, sorry, as well as expand the programming at the same time?
That's a good question, and I think that, you know, I know that Susan Moore and Mac Baitin have had plenty of experience of doing this already and maneuvering stuff around. I know that we're utilizing spaces that's available to us, that would be trailers, that would also be existing places, like when you say Holland Springs, utilizing the second floor of the Oak. There are spaces like that, so we still have room to grow, but we also have a way to allow for construction to take place and instruction to continue.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic. And then I noticed when I look at this year's meals tax plan, there are some additional projects that have made the list. So my question, and, and are they added to the list because there were studies, I mean, like the auditoriums? Can you explain how the three auditoriums got added? And especially the HVAC system at Freeman, because that's not a cheap system, but it's very needed at Freeman High School. So for folks who may follow this like I do.
Yeah, I think it's hand-in-hand, two pieces, and Mr. Pritchard can speak to it. So we have long-range master plans, so some of the projects you now see on more imminent year meals tax plans were much later. And so because of things like the bond happening and being able to fund some projects there, ESER funding with HVAC, we've been able to shift some projects so that there's, you know, they're, they are moved up on the timeline, if you will. And so the auditorium projects, for example, were on a long-range master project list. And by being able to accomplish certain projects with other funding sources, we're able to make the shift. And to your point with the Freeman HVAC, I think you couched it as an emergency replacement, so certainly hadn't planned to have to replace that whole system at this point, but given the significant circumstances around the failure of the system there and the work that's needed and the expense that's needed to keep it up to par, the idea is to replace that a bit off-cycle, where you do see us lay out the HVAC replacement cycle over a number of years for other buildings.
And we use meals tax funding for HVAC work. I mean, that's, that's prevalent throughout the meals tax plan. You know, we try to utilize that as much as possible, because we, that is an important part, as we've all learned from the beginning of the school year, how important it can be, so.
Yeah, we sure, we sure have, having a couple of schools, myself and my district, that have had some HVAC issues. So not, no projects were really replaced. They weren't taken off the list, right, as these other projects were added? They weren't taken off the list? Okay.
No, just as when we went through a two-year period without doing meals tax projects, I mean, they're still there, they just, they will be moved around until we can fit them in and make this thing work.
Right, and the team has done an assessment in terms of projects that needed, need to be done, especially as to safety, right? Or other reasons why they may have made the list, especially safety, are still gonna be done.
Priorities.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that's it, other than just celebrating the bond passing. I mean, it's huge in, in what it means for us in being able to invest in, in our infrastructure. Thank you, Ms. Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Utkorn?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Utkorn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to?
I thought you said Ms. Atkins. Expecting to go, okay. If we could go to the slide of the projects, that would be awesome. Thank you very much. That one.
Okay.
I'm looking at Longand and Davis, and they're both rebuilds, but also capacity projects, correct?
Yes.
Are we, do we have funding available for the planning before the bond? So when is planning starting?
Yes, actually, correctly, it's in purchasing now. The paperwork is in purchasing now. I mean, we want to move on this as fast as possible.
You heard that?
Yes.
No, and, and that's great. So I will ask, because some of our board members may not have been through this process, that, and Mrs. Moore, you well know that we did this when we were working on Tuckahoe and Tucker, that board members do like to be included when there are planning meetings. I sat and looked at schematics and things I had never gotten to look at before, which was awesome, especially at Tuckahoe and Tucker. So if we could be kept in the loop as those meetings happen, you're so good at that, and we appreciate it. And I think the team in the buildings appreciate when the board is really aware of what's going on. Now, do we have a projected capacity increase for those first two schools? Do we know, for example, eight, 10 classrooms? Do you have an idea? And that'll come as, I assume, as part of the planning, correct?
Yes, that will come as part of the planning. Our typical, our last few elementary schools were in that 750-student capacity range, which at Davis and Johnson, both, they are currently in the 500s of capacity. So just by going to a prototype as part of the rebuild process, we will gain almost 200 seats in capacity.
Which for both is so essential. And the people in Rivers Edge area are cheering. I, I think we had, I'm sure, at the Rivers Edge Voting Precinct, the highest, I imagine, the highest turnout, because they, they also, they know that Longand will give relief to the Rivers Edge Springfield Park area, even though Springfield Park is no longer one of my schools. It is still a place in my heart that I advocate for. So I know that that area is very excited, and obviously, the area around Davis will get relief, which will create a lot of capacity in those two areas, which are so needed. The only request I have on this list is as we get to it, I know the economy derives a lot of what happens and supply issues, et cetera, is just that when I look at year six, and I look at how far, how long it's taken to get Adams to the point where it's going to be eight years past the last bond before that was built. If, as we go through this process, that new West End Elementary School, we do still have capacity issues in Three Chopped. If you looked at the list that Dr. Hinton shared with us just earlier, I mean Colonial Trail, overcapacity or nearing capacity in some of my elementary schools. So I just, as we get through this, if they can be accelerated, I'm assuming we will take advantage of that possibility. I know that it's important when you're doing bonds to portion out some each year for county planning. So just if we could prevail upon our county counterparts to look at that as we go through this process, to accelerate that as quickly as we can for the new school in Fairfield and the new school in West End, because I, those are capacity projects as well, and we, we need that capacity in both places. As to the playgrounds, and what you said, Mr. Pritchard, is so important. I know in years past, and I'm sure some of us up here were involved in raising money for, when we were PTA people, in raising money for playgrounds. And the last time I did that, we only had to raise $40,000. And if you don't mind repeating, how much is the new playground now?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand for each one.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we cannot put that on the backs of parents in PTAs. That is not their charge, and it is, it is our charge as a school system. So I am glad that we are taking that on, and to hear that we're doing 32 replacements, that is awesome. That is amazing. And so I'm glad we're putting emphasis there, because it is part of the standards of quality. We are supposed to provide places for, for kids to play, but they are also used by the community. So I, I think that's so important. And lastly, you thanked a lot of people about the meals tax, and I'll thank the people who eat out. And, and every, and we have to think about it, every time you eat out, you help us fix something in a school. So I appreciate that, and that's all from me. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Utkorn. Ms. Atkins?
I'm still on a natural high after seeing over 80% approval. It's going to be there for quite a bit of time. When you see and understand how wonderful that is, so I'm grateful as well. I do have a question around wellness. When we're looking at planning, do we look at wellness in the space of moving from water fountains to water bottle filling stations? Do we include that into, when we're thinking about wellness, is that included into facility planning?
Natural lighting, I mean, all of that stuff is considered when you start looking at design. So yes, and we try to make sure that you upgrade, it's a new building, so it should have some of the newer elements that's going to go along with that, like water bottle fillers.
That's one of the requests that I have for schools, is making sure that that gets on this list for all schools in Henrico County, because I hear from on this list for all schools in Henrico County, because I hear from all schools around moving from, from a wellness perspective, moving away from the water fountain to the water bottle filling station. Now, and particularly, I've seen some really outdated water fountains, and I'd like to see those replaced, and I will give you a list in the Verina District and, and add it to your, your plan, and I'll give you that. The other question I have is around the playground stations. Do you already have the list that, okay, can you share that list with me so I'm aware of which schools will be receiving upgraded or new playgrounds? I want to make sure there's some specific schools that I want to make sure that is on that list, and I can share that once I see it. And then around the new buses, can you share with me what the technology upgrades are?
Yes, a lot of it is tablets that we are finishing up and implementing in there, using swipe cards to get students, so we can identify students that are getting on and off the bus. Once it gets, gets acclimated, it should speed up the process of pickup and drop off. You know, it's just nice to know, I think it's something that we learned through COVID. This would have been nice to have had well back then, particularly when we were doing contact tracing and everything else. So this kind of came out of that along with, I think, that to help out Dr. Hughes's folks with Title I and stuff like that, and the use of the facilities and vehicles and transporting students. I think they rely on the data collected on that. This will provide that as well. So it, it will help us, make us a little bit more effective and efficient in what we're trying to do.
I'm so happy you shared that. I was aware of the swipe cards, and I think it's actually going to grow beyond that when we're thinking about attendance to actually know using that swipe card when students are getting on the bus. I don't know if it'll be used when they get off the bus, but I think that data is going to be important in several different categories. And from a wellness perspective, I like the swipe cards too. And so is it possible to also get a list of what those technology upgrades on the buses are? And, because I, I just want to share that with the community because it's important from a safety, and I think there's some wellness pieces that are going to be great with those additions. And I had one more. When is the date for the pre-planning study? Let me figure out what slide. It's on the future projects for long-range planning at the bottom where it says schools are identified. Do we have a timeframe on when that pre-planning begins?
I want to find funding as soon as possible and have this done before the end of the school year.
Fantastic.
Yes.
That's all that I have. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Real excited about this. To piggyback on what Ms. Utkorn was saying, so I'm anticipating that during year one, we'll free up design funds for Quackason so that it can break ground in year two.
Yes, that's what they were, the, the government has pretty much laid out for us as a plan that would address that so we could start pretty much on time schedule with these, with these planned projects.
Great, I'm super excited. I want to thank Ms. Moore's team, especially this summer. I know y'all worked really hard to fit in as many deferred maintenance projects and particularly security vestibules and squeeze some extra ones in this summer. So thank you to you and your team for taking that on. And then really, really thrilled about the Freeman HVAC, really thrilled. Do we have an estimated timeline on that?
It all depends if this gets approved. I mean, then we'll start the paperwork. I mean, because this is a request, so it has to be approved by the board of supervisors as well for the funding to take place. Once that's done, I think even before that, just for preliminary standards, we'll have paperwork getting ready. If it's approved, we'll put it in as soon as possible. Hopefully, we would like to think, you know, you know, we, we would like to start on that this summer, hopefully, but I, I can't give you a definitive timeline on that. I'm sorry, I wish I could.
No, I appreciate that.
If I may add, HVAC is one of those things that we have extremely long lead times on right now.
Okay.
Months and months worth of lead time. So it's just going to depend on when, when we get it on the street, if the market is calming down at all, and particularly with, I believe we have 14 rooftop units that we would be replacing. So that is a big order.
Yeah.
So it will all, we will be at the mercy of the market as far as what our timeline will be.
Okay, well, let's keep in contact with that. I, I mean, I just, from teaching there and being there, I know the first warm day of the spring, it's going to go down again. And so I know this has been a long time coming, a long time of trying to limp, limp on a system that underperformed than what we expected. And so this is really exciting and anticipated by not only the staff, but the students. They'll, you know, they will advocate for this to me and ask me about it. So thank you for this. Let's see what we can do to move it along, and I appreciate your efforts. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.